Andy, can you tell somebody at the town hall they're not welcome there? Or do you have to let everybody in? That's not billed as a public meeting, we just...
Okay, everyone, it's 6 o'clock. So I'd like to call this meeting of September 19th to order. I'm first going to, my usual announcement that for anyone who plans to speak on any item on or off the agenda, if you could please fill out a yellow speaker card so that our city clerk is aware of the number of people wanting to speak on any item, so we can plan ahead for that. It is 6 o'clock and we're going to go to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember La Romanios.
Everyone could please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And remain standing, please. Is Bill Hawkins? Yes. New hope here for the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, members of the community, it's great to see some young people here tonight. Great representation of our city and our community. A word that's been on my mind and on my heart today is peace. And perfect peace, the Bible talks a lot about perfect peace. And although it's hard to understand perfect peace, maybe in the midst of either personal chaos that may be going on in our life or within our community. And I think peace is not necessarily just dictated by everything going well. It's an understanding that we can still have a rudder in the water and we can still be moving things forward and have our eyes on the prize. And I think that comes from an understanding that we are led and directed by God. And so I believe tonight, I want to pray that, for perfect peace over our community, we call our officers that are keeping peace within our community, peace officers, and their representations and agents of peace within our community. But I want to pray in that way with that in mind. Would you join me? Father, we thank you that even your word says that we can have peace beyond our own understanding. And so in the midst of whatever may be personally may be taking place in our lives where we just need an infusion of peace, as well as within our community. And I know there's very many sectors, the business sector, the school system within our community that could use just a covering of peace. So I pray a blanket of peace over our city. God, we thank you for our great community. We thank you for the young people that are here that represent not just the future but the here and now. And we thank you for their involvement. We pray over our schools for peace. We pray over our first responders, those that watch over us, God. We pray that you would watch over them as they keep peace and bring stability to our community. We thank you for our council and the leadership within our city. And we pray as well for peace over them and guide and direct decisions, guide and direct even our conversations. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
The youth are all here for interviews for the Youth Commission, by the way. Okay, city clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Friday, September 16th at 12:15 PM. Roll call. Councilmember Armandares?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember La Romanios?
Present.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right, under orders of the day, we have none. Under employee introductions, we have none. Under ceremonial items, we have none. So we're going to move on to interviews. We are interviewing for two commissions, one seat on the Parks and Rec Commission and six seats on the Youth Commission. I see one person here for, I'd like to do Parks and Rec first. Are both here? I see Louis. Terrence? Okay, then Louis, do you want to, why don't you just take the podium since it's just you and then we'll do something different for the youth? Thank you for being here, thank you for applying. And why don't you just take like a minute or two and tell us, everybody has your application. If you could just tell us what it is.
Certainly.
You want us to know what you'd like to point out and then I'll go to the council and see if there's a question that a council member wants to pose.
Sure. I am kind of lived in Gilroy most of my life. I raised two kids here. One graduate from Christopher, one from Gilroy. I'm a big believer in Parks and Rec. I coached both of my kids basketball from elementary school until they were old enough to play for the high school and junior high. I, 32 years and as a certified public count, just recently retired. Done plenty of fishing, plenty of golf, and now I'm ready to give back a bit to the community. I'm a regular of our parks, walk my dog through most of Gilroy, do the retirement squawk all over the place. And I see, you know, the condition of our parks. I believe Gilroy is a beautiful city and its parks are one of its assets. And so I liked, I wanted to volunteer to maintain that and if possible, to improve.
Beautiful, thank you. Counsel, would anyone like to pose a particular question?
Louis Ramirez.
Sorry, I should, yeah, Louis Ramirez. I have a question. Okay, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for being here, for applying and for your volunteerism as a coach. I think that's a great contribution.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, what would you do, because you know there's families in Gilroy that can't afford Parks and Rec programs, even though they're, you know, they're more moderately priced compared to private leagues and stuff like that. What would you do to bring more equity to that or to help families that are in that situation?
Well, I first need to study it. I'm not quite sure on the finances yet. I haven't done any deep dive into how the finances work, what the budget looks like. Is it a surplus? Is it a deficit? Where it's being allocated? So I couldn't answer that right away without some study.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? No. Thank you for being here. I think your application speaks for itself, certainly time and go.
Thank you for saying that.
I didn't know you were retired. Wow, lucky you. Okay, thanks. Okay, so moving on to the Youth Commission. How many, can you raise your hand if you're here for Youth Commission? So I see how many, so it's four. Okay, so four of the seven applicants are here. So is it okay that they speak from there or have, maybe we'll have them each come up? Okay, why don't you, one at a time, let's do it that way. One at a time come up, I'll, is Emily one? No. Sophie? Yes. Okay, Sophie, we'll start with you. If you could go to the podium, we'll kind of do the same thing. Just tell us what is most important to you, you know, that we hear. We have your application and then we'll see if a council member has whatever question we ask you, though we'll pose the same question to everybody.
Okay. Hi, everyone, my name is Sophie Gong. I'm a sophomore in high school and I've lived in Gilroy all of my life. While I don't go to school here, I know a lot about the community. I've gotten involved with volunteering at the Gilroy Academic and Wellness Center. I've been a tutor there this summer. I'm a new volunteer for Cake for Kids, which is a nonprofit organization to bake cakes for special occasions for underprivileged children in our community. And I'd say the most important thing that is to me about Gilroy or the most important problem, Miss Blankley, I'd say the most important thing to me about Gilroy is the vibrance of the people. Everyone has always surrounded me with so much love and joy and I just, I love Gilroy so much, I couldn't imagine living anywhere else. But the biggest problem I would say is just the overabundance, I feel, of fast food restaurants in our town. I feel like over the past years, there's been just a skyrocketing amount of chain after chain coming in and taking over where there should be local family restaurants or actually chains that are promoting healthy dietary options because if we, we all know that processed food isn't beneficial to our kids or anyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if you could stay there and let's, yeah, finish. Does anyone have a particular question? I'd like to suggest one, but I want it to be one that everybody would like to be the one for all. Mine would be, what is your avenue for outreach? How would you plan to reach and communicate with youth? Is that a question that the rest of the council would like to hear an answer to or does someone have something that are? Okay, so we'll use that question for everybody then.
Just to clarify how I would communicate within the council?
How would you, yeah, how do you see communication going? You're on the commission, you're a commissioner. How are you reaching all the youth? Because we have that same issue right up here. And just how would, how would you go about engaging people?
Okay.
Yeah, that sort of thing.
So first of all, I'm really flexible, I'm super defendable, I can totally switch it on a change's notice. I'd say especially nowadays, everyone is super attached to their devices. So I think the best way to reach children in the community or just youth in general is especially through social media. I think it's a rising platform that really needs to be acknowledged and taken advantage of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for taking the time to be here and thank you for applying. Okay. James? Yep. You want to come on up and? So same thing, you can start by just telling us about yourself and that, well, whatever it is you want to point out to us and then we'll go into that one question.
Okay. So hello, everyone, my name is James Din. I am a senior from GECA, you know, 13th year of the Gilroy College Academy. And also finishing this year or hoping to finish this year with three associate's degrees from Gatlin College because I'm doing roles. And also wanted to point out the fact that I'm a CS major, which a lot of people aren't or they don't have the privilege to pursue CS essentially in Gilroy. And I want to, like, my mission is to push CS or just like tech in general, STEM, in Gilroy for the youth. So you might know Isaac Wong, he's also in the Gilroy Youth Commission. He and I, you know, a lot of, a few of my friends, we launched Gilroy Hacks, essentially just a hackathon. But we also hosted workshops to help teach the youth on CS principles and also computer program languages, right? And also the hackathon really helps people like pursue their CS interests and collaborate as a team to like make projects, right? But the problem with our hackathon is that we didn't have that many people attend, we had like 20. But I feel like with the Gilroy Youth Commission and more marketing and outreach, we could get, definitely get more people to attend our hackathon, right? So like, that's why like I'm here, right, to apply for our Gilroy Commissioner.
You don't know what that is? He's a tech person, he could help us figure it out. So for members of the public who might not know what CS is, computer science, right?
Yeah, computer science, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
And STEM is just an acronym for Science, Technology, Engineering and Math, if you're not aware.
Okay, so then a question. How would you go about communicating with your youth constituency, so to speak?
So through Gilroy Hacks, we actually marketed through contacting local high schools and also like outside of Gilroy. Like, we contacted their principals and also their PTSA to help market us, right? We also use social media because social media is really a popular and also it's very like, it's very widely used by the youth, at least in my school, right? So, but like through Gilroy Commission, the main reason why I'm applying is because the connections, right? Like Gilroy Commission has connections to like businesses and also other missions within like the city, right? So that's the main, that's why I'm applying.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Michael D'Angelo is not here, right? Okay. Alfred James? Go ahead, do you want me to repeat the question?
It's fine.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Alfred James. I'm currently a sophomore at GECA, the Gilroy Early College Academy. And I really want to join the Youth Commission because one of my main goals is to help increase youth involvement within our community because I know as a person, a part of the youth myself, that there's definitely a gap between the city in terms of activities and the youth. One of the main, more notable ways I've helped out with the community is through Boy Scouts. I think that's been a really big part of my life and through Eagle Projects and other service activities, we've been able to reach out to the community and it's been pretty fun.
That's awesome. Okay, so is there anything else you'd like to share about getting people to engage or is that kind of covered in what you just said? Up to you, I'm just asking if there's anything else you'd like to add.
I think in terms of ways we could increase outreach to the youth, there's obviously social media as everybody is on their phones for hours per day. And also think spreading the word verbally also helps, especially at school. I know I could, if we have events, I could definitely help out and advertising at schools would definitely be beneficial.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay, Winston James?
Hi. Hello, everyone, my name is Winston James. I'm a senior at Christopher High School and I'm also reapplying for the Youth Commission. Before the Youth Commission, or I still am a Boy Scout and like my brother, we always help out on service projects. And just helping out the city of Gilroy and San Martin, we learned about giving back to the community. And I've been blessed with a lot of resources like this Youth Commission in the last two years. The first year got basically taken away with COVID and last year we were able to reopen. And the year we were able to do in-person activities, it was really engaging and fun. We had a holiday pasada at the park, at Sandy Super Park, and a lot of community building events. And yeah, I've just, I would really like to continue on it and bring back what I've learned the last two years to the commission again.
That's beautiful. So you're an incumbent, right? Okay, so you already know the ropes. Is there anything else you'd like to add? Anything more about engagement?
Yeah, so I know you, engagement is really tough. Like, on the Youth Commission, I had a project where I was supposed to advertise for these Gilroy greeting cards and it was really tough to advertise. So I understand what it's like to try to go on Instagram and Facebook and post, social media posts and not get any feedback. I think it has to do more with how you're approaching the youth, like you have to tell them the benefits of some of the activities you're posting. When I was on the Youth Commission, a lot of our events were just poster names and didn't really say what we were doing. So announcing to the school a couple of weeks before something is happening, like, I understand, like, my, I didn't advertise very well, but I understand why it didn't work. So, yeah, it takes a lot of effort to advertise.
Right. Okay, well, thank you. Let me see if anyone else is here that I might not realize. Destiny? No? Okay. And that's, that's it? So, all right, you guys, thank you so much for applying. The city needs you and values you and thanks you for your application. And at the next meeting, we will do the appointments. Okay? All right? Very good. Onto agenda item four, which is presentations to the council. Asking the city clerk how many speaker cards we have for items not on the agenda.
I believe I have one speaker card. I just want to make sure, Mr. Von Kirkish?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Blankley, council, members of the community. I get the paper, the Gilroy Dispatch, every Thursday morning. They're nice enough to actually put it on my porch, unlike the Sunday Mercury News. But when I looked at the paper and read it, I was appalled to see this headline. Dim party pulls support from Tovar, Mr. Hilton. You know, I served in the U.S. Air Force for four years. I served in intelligence. My job was to listen in on communist communications. And what I'm reading here is a communist communication. This is so wrong. Mr. Tovar, I had my sign on, your sign on my lawn last year. And I called you up and I asked you to put it on there. And the reason I did was because even though we are different parties, I know that you're an independent thinker. And that's what I wanted out of you. I don't want you to be subservient to Hilton's agenda.
This is out of order. Councilmember.
As my comment, shut your mouth.
How dare you?
How dare you interrupt me?
Okay, so I would like the council member to not interrupt. Okay? And finish with your time.
Mayor, I'd like us to not be attacked personally. Folks are not supposed to direct their comments towards us when we're, when they're speaking.
I can do anything I want like you do.
I'm sure you think you can.
Then you think you can too. So, Mr. Hilton?
Okay. Let's, let's try to, go ahead, please finish.
I'm very angry. This has never happened in our community and it's happening all too often by these two people. It's got to stop and if it doesn't stop, we're going to do stuff. And I mean, we are going to do stuff. This community is going to do stuff to make your life miserable, both of you.
Those are threats.
Thank you.
And they're not appropriate. Next speaker.
Hi.
Cheryl Parks.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Parks and today I got a phone call from Jeannie Gage. She's been a resident in Gilroy for 78 years. She was unable to attend. She did send a letter for everybody to read, but she would like it read aloud and that's why I'm here today. So it says, Dear Mayor and City Council Members, after reading the article in the Gilroy Dispatch, I was concerned that party politics was possibly entering into the performance of our council members. I wish to congratulate Councilmember Fred Tovar for his effort to use individual thought in his job as a council member. As a reminder, Gilroy is a nonpartisan city. We should be mindful that party politics should not enter into any discussion. Fred represents the entire community, as should all council members. It is difficult to be ostracized by your political party peers, but Fred was undeterred and remained a councilperson for all of us, regardless of the backlash to himself. Congratulations to the city council members who used the individual collaborative process in getting the work done for all constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes. I wanted to address something. I would like to address some comments that were made at our last city council meeting about the cruise night. It was brought to my attention that the individual making the comments was referring to comments made at a town hall with Councilmember Marks and myself. After thinking about it, I checked the dates. Our town hall was on August 18th. Car show was on August 28th. We could not have been discussing something that hadn't happened yet. I also checked with people in attendance and no one heard any comments. It saddens me that there are individuals that would make false statements to try to make Councilmember Marks look bad in an effort to hurt her chances in the upcoming election. This is the first time I can remember that we have such a divided and disrespectful council. But after reading the dispatch on Friday, I think it's clear where it's coming from. Come on, folks, we're better than this. Let's try to do better. Thank you.
Councilmember Armandares? No, report. Councilmember Marks?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the city of Gilroy for paving the alleyway right there by the alley, by the post office, I mean. It was very nice to be able to drive down and mail letters and not have to keep turning my steering wheel to dodge all of the potholes. So thank you very, very much. At the South Illinois Habitat Governing and Implementation Board this last week, they talked about how they're adding more property to the Habitat for Wildlife Protection and Conservation. They have a restoration, they had a restoration update on the Balsa Road Fish Passage and they said Pacheco Creek construction would begin in 2023. They had good results of the burrowing owls. We have 43 chicks, double the amount that we had from last year. And they are in the process of reviewing the draft of the EIR for Sergeant Branch Quarry. They said they will not be commenting on whether it is a good or a bad project, but they will be commenting on the mitigation factor on the wildlife and environment. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. From the Visit Gilroy California Welcome Center, total number of collateral and brochures delivered to hotels and RV parks in the Gilroy area during the month of August was 763 pieces. TOT taxes collected by hotels during the month of July was 213,000. This is a 10% increase over prior year during the same time period. Two new blogs were posted on the Visit Gilroy website, Gilroy Gardens, Seven Hidden Gems plus Insider Tips. Any question experiences in Gilroy? Blog readership continues to increase month over month with over 830 unique blog users during the month of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. No report, just, just a comment. I want to actually just thank all my supporters, those folks who've reached out to me and called me, showing your support. And rest assured that my decisions will always represent the entire city of Gilroy and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember La Romanios?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, both you and I were able to attend the Mobility Partnership Meeting, which consists of county officials from both Santa Clara County and San Benito, as we discuss mutual issues of concern around transportation. We received a report from VTA that they are looking potentially at expanding express lanes down through our part of the, part of the bay. That would be, they would run from Highway 85 to Dunn Avenue in Morgan Hill. They would convert existing high occupancy vehicle lanes to the express lane. So that's the one where you have to use your little pass and, and pay for that. And they would also look at creating new lanes, express lanes, from Dunn Avenue to Highway 25. Now, this is something that is still very, very, very far off, but it is something that they are looking at as a possibility of mitigating some of the traffic we all feel, especially on the return trip home from Silicon Valley in the afternoons. Additionally, work on the Highway 101 interchange with Highway 25 continues. We are looking after the design, the right-of-way acquisition and, and the beginning of construction. All of the construction would begin in 2024, so about a year and a half off, with estimated completion in 2028. So again, still a ways off, but that is something that we are very much working towards to improving that interchange. As people know, it can be a challenge getting out there. And then finally, for interested council members, the Cities Association, for which I am our city's representative, the Cities Association for the County will have a program on Thursday, September 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on working effectively with elected colleagues, your city manager and city staff. So that might be a good one for all of us. Feel free to let me know if you're interested and I'm happy to put you in contact with the organizer.
Thank you, council member. Okay, to piggyback a little bit on the Mobility Partnership Meeting, not to repeat anything that, that you said, but Phase 1 construction of the 25101 interchange is scheduled to begin in July of 2024. And it's, that phase will include the Santa Teresa extension. So for all of the streets that are otherwise being closed to get to 101 now, the Santa Teresa extension will be part of Phase 1. Wanted to point that out. The other thing I want to point out, because I had this in my State of the City address, was that through the Mobility Partnership, we had just applied for a $2 million grant through Jimmy Panetta's office to start the process, just start the process on widening 101 south of Dunn Avenue and all the way to 25. And that's of course something we're all waiting for. That grant is still pending, so we don't have answers yet on whether or not we're going to get that to just start addressing and getting this on the map, but that is definitely something we're working on. Then the other meeting that I attended this week on the 16th was a VTA board retreat. And that was really for the purpose of studying the Phase 2 design for the Bart Station at Deardon. And so all I want to bring back here to And so all I want to bring back here to share is it's trying to refine that design, and the things, the three goals are efficient circulation that can accommodate the passenger demand, maximizing TOD, Transit Oriented Development, around that station, and then, of course, balancing the goals with the cost and the schedule. And that concludes my report. Okay, council correspondents? We have none. Under future council-initiated items. Okay, I have one if no one else does. As council members, we have heard the many voices who have questions about the financial consequences already brought on the city and criticism for remaining silent while the recall effort proceeds and the financial burdens to the public continue to mount. The overwhelming outcry that we do something to protect the city and the continued insistence from members of the public that we can do something are difficult to address when only the democratic process of an election can bring about or remove a council member. As stewards of the city and in the financial interest of the public, I'm asking this council to agendize for consideration at our next meeting a request for resignation should the recall qualify by its quickly approaching deadline and before the public faces the cost of a special election that could have been avoided. So that's what I am requesting be discussed at the next council meeting. The question is, does the majority of the council wish to do that? That would need to be, yeah.
Mayor, I'm sorry, no, just a little bit more clarification. So it's a discussion to discuss?
To consider a formal request should the recall be successful, but before the public has to incur the cost of a recall election.
God, okay.
Is that legal? For us to request? Yeah, I believe it is, because we can't ask. I mean, we can't force. We don't have the power, but anybody can ask. Wow. Yeah. But the question is, we can't ask as a council unless the majority of the council wants to talk about that. So that's what I'm looking for. Okay, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Okay, so 5 to 2, so that will go on next month. Okay, consent calendar. Would anybody like to remove anything from consent?
I would.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions about item 8.5. So I'd like to remove that, so we could...
Okay, so let's just pull that. Anybody else? Okay, so do I? Wait, public comment. Is there any public comment on the other items on consent?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I'll take a motion from someone on everything but 8.5? Okay, made by, oh, it's already happening? Okay, sorry.
We'll call them, actually, so let me go ahead and just ask for the motion and for the second, please.
Okay, so I believe the motion was made by Councilmember LaRomenos?
That is correct. It's referral of the consent calendar with the exception of making one.
Okay. And the second will be Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Let me make sure here. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRomenos?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, so now, 8.5. How do I start that? Do you want to start with your question?
Sure. So we've had a local family come to our meeting twice to, and I think she wrote correspondence as well, asking about the area of Las Animas Park at Arnold Drive, the entrance there, and the increase in crime and issues that are impacting her family and the families near that entrance. So I'm wondering if this increase includes maybe different contract language that increases the presence or the patrol, the patrol of LA Universal in that area?
Thank you, Ms. Armendaras. The contract itself is for patrolling and of closing of the parks at night. They lock up the entire facility. I have personally met with the family. I know several of our public works folks have as well, and we are putting in some measures that we think will slow down the activity in that lot, which the main one is putting a gate. There's currently nothing stopping anybody from parking in that area, so we will have our contractor, as part of this contract, going every night, lock that gate, make sure people are no longer there. So that's the big part of this, for that.
Thank you. Okay, there are no other questions then? And no public comment on this side either? Okay, then is there a motion to 8.5?
I can second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bracco, second by Councilmember Armendaras.
This can be a digital vote, Madam Mayor.
Interesting, okay. Okay. So that passes 7-0. Okay, item 9, bids and proposals, we have none. Item 10, public hearings, none. 11, unfinished business, none. 12, introduction of new business. 12.1, receive preliminary fiscal year 2022 year-end financial report and adopt a resolution authorizing mid-cycle budget adjustments. Jimmy, you're going to introduce this, and then Harjo.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As Harjo gets his presentation ready, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about how this fits into your overall budget process coming up the next two-year cycle. We are in year 2 of the second year, or the second year of the two-year process, and now about three months into it. Council will receive this report tonight to talk about the end of last year. And one thing I want to point out is that over the course of the last several years, the amount of money that we have saved at the end has been less and less. And that's actually a good thing, I think. We, many years ago, would have $2, $3, $4 million left over at the end of the year, and I always saw that as opportunity lost to provide services. As Harjo will present to you, we're under $1 million. And so we're tightening that budget. And so the budget adjustments that we do ask for are very few because we're squeezing as much as we can out of that budget. And some of the items, you'll see no budget item amendment requested. So we're doing our best to make sure that we spend every dollar that we have. The next part of this process will be at the next council meeting when our management analyst, Bryce Atkins, will give you a report on the work plan items, including the legislative agenda that council's given us and some of the council-initiated items, so we can show you what we've got done, what's still on our radar, what the timeline is for a lot of those things. So you'll have two big pieces in the next few weeks, and that will set you up, because this will be the last budget update you'll have until January. And in January, we typically do a council retreat, review goals and priorities and programs, and we also review what all we got done. So this is the first step. I think you'll see that things are getting done. Some things are getting improved, including the post office alley, which I don't think I've ever gotten more compliments than I have in the last few days about the post office alley. But hey, people notice when it's something they use every day, and that's for sure. So with that, I'll turn it over to Harjo, who will go take it through the end of last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Harjo Tsanga, the City's line instructor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the members of the community. I'll be presenting the preliminary fiscal year 22 year-end report and the mid-cycle adjustments. Background, the current biannual budget for fiscal year 22 and 23 was adopted in June of 2021. The council and the committee last received a fiscal year 22 mid-year budget update back in March 22, which included the mid-year adjustments as well as changes to the position control list. For the fiscal year 22, relative to the general fund revenues, the revenues came in at $72.4 million compared to the $61.3 budgeted, primarily due to the one-time ARPA, ARPA monies, and the higher-than-projected tax revenues as the economy opened up and the COVID-related orders were relaxed. Excluding the one-time ARPA monies, general fund revenues were about 11% better, or about $6.4 million, again, primarily due to higher tax revenue collections. As for sales tax, which is our primary source of revenue, it came in at $22.1 million, or about $3.2 million better than budget due to the strong economic rebound. The notable increases for the year were in transportation segment, which includes auto sales, service stations, followed by general retail segment, as well as the accounting pool. For property tax, the property tax came in at $18.5 million, about $1.2 million better than budget, and most of that is attributable to additional access to ERAF funds that the city received than we had anticipated at the time of budget adoption. Next is the utility users' tax. The city received $5.4 million, which is about $1.2 million more than the budgeted. The notable increases here are related to the energy-related utilities, primarily such as gas and electric. So we've all seen increases in both of those utilities personally, I'm sure, as was the case for our consumers in the city as well. TOT came in at $1.6 million, which is about $200,000 better than budget. And the other revenue, which consists of the, which includes the one-time ARPA monies, if we were to exclude those, this category came in about $400,000 better than budget, or about 3%. As for general fund expenditures, again, this chart illustrates the various departments and their respective expenditures for fiscal year 22. About 66% of the general fund expenditures are related to public safety, which includes our police and fire services, and the remainder consists of general governance, which includes administration, finance, HR, and then a remainder is public works, community development. So for fiscal year 22, as the city administrator alluded, general fund, basically, our expenditures came in at 5.9% as compared to the 57 million that was budgeted. For non-general fund revenues, the city has an aggregate of about 90 funds in this segment, which are non-general, for which revenue is, one way or another, committed, restricted, or assigned for respective purposes. So for this information, for the next two slides, the information is going to be presented in aggregate. So for fiscal year 22, in total, for the non-general, we had about $73.1 million, or about 95%. The revenues were received, and the notable changes are in special revenue-type funds, the internal service, and the water enterprise. For the special revenue, the primary sources in our governmental revenues for Gilroy, this includes transportation funds such as gas taxes, SB1 monies, Measure B monies. It includes public safety grants, regional task force grants, as well as community development-related CDBG and housing trust fund. So for fiscal year 22, this fund type received $6.5 million of the budgeted 7.1. So there were some funds that received more than budget. Primarily, the decrease here is due to Measure B funds for fiscal year 22. As you'll recall, the council recently awarded the pavement maintenance project for which we're starting to incur expenditures. So we'll expect to, so we'll receive the allotment for Measure B for 22, but it'll be in fiscal year 23. For the internal service funds, which includes our IT, fleet, facilities, workers' compensation liability funds, they primarily receive their revenues through charges to other departments for providing services. And for fiscal year 22, the ISF funds received $12.8 million in revenues approximately about 8% or $1.2 million less than budget. And this was primarily due to the decrease in fleet service charges, you'll note later on. As the industry is impacted, we have some trouble procuring vehicles as well for our departments. And last but not least, for the water, the city generated about $13 million in water fund revenues, approximately $1.5 million, or 10% less than budget. And the notable decrease here is basically due to the water conservation mandates that have been enacted by the state and the declaration of the water supply shortage, which was done in fiscal year 22. As for the non-general funds expenditures for fiscal year 22, $68.7 million, or 54% of the non-general funded budgeted expenditures were actually expended. The notable changes are, again, in special revenues, capital development, ISF. And the areas of understanding, and primarily those three categories, is in the capital outlay. Again, just talking about special revenues, we recently awarded a lot of projects, the Eagleberry Project, the pavement project, and so forth. And again, on the ISF side, primarily is the fleet, and we did have a budget for the HVAC project through the city hall, which you'll receive an update on later on tonight. For the sewer enterprise, excluding the capital outlay project for the plant expansion, the fund expended 91% of the budgeted expense on annual ongoing operations. As for the water enterprise, excluding the capital outlay, the fund expended about 83% of its budget on annual ongoing operations. So that concludes the report on the actuals for fiscal year 22. With that, I want to take a pause. You want me to take questions now, or should I just run through the presentation?
I can ask. Anybody have questions at this point? All right, please continue.
Perfect. All right. So as you've witnessed with our revenues, fiscal year 22 did experience a robust growth in the economy, and as a result, the city received higher-than-projected tax revenues in the general fund. So this trend is actually expected to carry into fiscal year 23. As such, we're recommending some adjustments to revenues and expenses, specifically to the general fund major tax revenues. So in total, which is about $7 million, and notably, our primary tax revenue source, which is our sales tax, we're recommending an adjustment of $2 million compared to the $20.6 million that's budgeted for fiscal year 23. For property tax, we're projected to come in $2.3 million better from the $16.9 million budgeted, and that's primarily, again, due to the ERAF payment that we're anticipating for the upcoming fiscal year. For utility user tax, again, we're projecting to come in $1.2 million better from the $4.3 budgeted in fiscal year 23, again, related to the energy, gas, and electric utilities. On the expenditure side of things, we're also recommending expenditure adjustments in the areas of personnel, materials, and services, as well as capital outlay. For personnel, three positions, which were unfunded during the general fund fiscal recovery plan, are recommended to be restored. The first one is a recreation supervisor. This is primarily due to the opening up of the economy, and the recreation programs are now getting busier, so it's resulting in us hiring additional part-time staff. So this position would provide support to the program, as well as oversight to the staff. So it's appropriate to restore this position at this time. In the public works department, we're recommending two maintenance worker positions. We restore two senior maintenance workers. This would be in the parks and landscapes, as well as streets and wastewater function of the public works. Last but not least is the detention service officer. And this position, again, was unfunded as part of the general fund fiscal recovery plan and was responsible for providing support to the ops, support services, and primarily handled the maintenance of the detention facilities, assisted with bookings and transporting arrestees. So the work is currently being performed by a patrol officer, thereby taking an officer off the streets where they could be providing additional services to the community. So we're recommending that this position now be restored as well. And the cost for all three of these restorations will be absorbed within the existing operations of their respective department budgets.
Sure.
On the detention officer, is that just one body?
Just one position. We have existing bodies as well, but this is just one position.
Oh, and the other shifts?
Yep. The next one is a reclassification of a personnel. This is the senior management analyst position. We're recommending it be reclassified to the assistant to the city administrator. This teammate is performing work at a much higher level, you know, and works very closely with the senior executive team, the city administrators, city clerk, council initiatives, as well. So as a result of this work audit that we have done, it's recommended that this position be reclassified to a title of assistant to the city administrator, and this would be subject to review and approval of the personal commission, of course. The next three positions that you have are new positions that we're adding. One is for the network administrator. This is currently staffed as a part-time. Network admin at about 25 hours a week. After review of the work, as well as the need of the department, it's recommended that this position would be better filled at a full-time position, that way we're able to get the most bang for our buck, as well as we're finding it's hard to retain employees that come in at this level of work at a part-time scale.
Harjo, I have a question, so does Councilmember LaRomenos. Why don't you go first? Go ahead.
Harjo, just looking at these numbers here for the new personnel in particular, is that full freight, or is that just salary?
That's exactly what my question was.
It's with benefits.
That's with benefits, okay. We're all looking at that number.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
There we go, okay, that answered my question.
Thank you.
Yes, I should clarify that, yes. These are salary plus benefit.
Okay.
The next position we're looking, recommending to add is the accounting assistant, 1/2 classification. As part of the reopening of the city hall campus, you'll recall a customer service concierge desk at the city hall lobby was commissioned as a pilot, was commissioned as a pilot, which is currently being staffed on a rotational basis by teammates from across all departments. The service has been viewed very successful, and we're recommending that this time that we make that a permanent offering at the City Hall. And because majority of the customer service inquiries that are coming in are primarily for finance department, we're recommending that the position be from the finance department. That way, we can backfill using the existing accounting assistant 1 positions, and it provides additional rotational flexibility. Last but not least, in this category, we have a recommendation to add a management analyst position. They'll primarily focus on grant opportunities. As you would agree, we have seen many successes in the last year on the work that we have done on applying and receiving grants. So staff are recommending we add a management analyst position. And the position will also assist with other special projects within the city administrator's office. And it's expected that, you know, because this position is going to be working on grant-related stuff, we would be able to get reimbursements and grant funds that would basically help offset the cost of this position. Next, we're also recommending a few other personnel-related adjustments. One is to the overtime budget for the fire department. And the increase is primarily requested because the existing budget is not adequate to cover the normal time off and other core departmental functions. And some of the current overtime is also due to the staffing at the temporary fire station. So we're just bringing the overtime budget to the adequate level that we anticipate, plus, you know, as we kind of fill some current vacancies as well. And last but not least is my favorite here as well, as we've done some work on this. This is the Section 115 pension trust contribution. You'll recall back in April, we adopted a pension funding policy. Pursuant to that policy, two things happened. One is we prepay the UAL, and we take the interest savings, and we put those into the Section 115 trust. So we did that for fiscal year '23 back in July. And the second component of the policy calls for, you know, annually, when we bring back a prelim report back to you, up to 25% of the general fund expense savings can be diverted to the Section 115 trust. So we're recommending $250,000 to be deposited into the Section 115 trust from the general fund expense savings of approximately $1 million. Next, I have materials and services. Again, in the areas of administration, we're asking for about $170,000 of increase for professional memberships, contractual services, expenses related to the November 2022 general election, including the ballot. And then some dollars for training new teammates within this department and function. Within the administrative services, we're requesting increases related to recruitment expenses, costs for energy related to fuel and natural gas. That's for gas to, you know, basically heat the facilities, as well as our fuel for city vehicles as well. So we're no exception to pay for those costs as well. We previously shared that the city's general liability premium has seen a significant increase, both for fiscal year '22 and '23. So we're asking for additional appropriations to, for those reasons, as well as repair and maintenance projects within our facilities that we were unable to fulfill or finish, but we would like to do so in fiscal year '23. Last but not least would be the information technology services. Again, there's some cybersecurity-related equipment and softwares that we'd like to proceed on as well, which are carried over from prior fiscal year. Within the community development, we're requesting an increase in contractual services for housing element-related work. In finance, we're requesting an increase related to audit-related services. There's additional requirements that we need to fulfill, so we're asking additional dollars for that. And then, as far as the capital outlay goes, which is within the administrative services department, again, I mentioned earlier is our purchase of vehicles. We were not able to procure vehicles for departments in '22. Therefore, we'd like to roll those dollars over to be able to fulfill those in fiscal year '23. So that's approximately $723,000 there. So now I'll talk a little bit about the general fund forecast. So this chart is an updated general fund forecast, which incorporates our preliminary fiscal year '22 actuals, our role forwarding encumbrances, our year-to-date budget amendments that the council has already approved. It also incorporates the recommended mid-cycle adjustments that we just went over. And last but not least, as you recall, council has recently approved various labor contracts as well. So all of those are built into this forecast as well through the terms of their respective agreements. In addition to that, I'll talk a little bit about on the next slide, but I'll preview here is you probably saw in the news, the Calpers investments returns for fiscal year '22 came in at negative 6.1%. To the extent possible, we have tried to model that as well and build that into the forecast as well. So that's also reflected in here. So overall, excluding the ARPA monies, the general fund ended fiscal year '22 with a net operating margin of $6.2 million, again, primarily due to higher tax revenue collection. The one-time ARPA funds, coupled with the robust growth in the economy, have provided the much-needed stability to the general fund, as is evident here in the forecast. For fiscal year '23, we project a similar trend, but of course, with half of the operating margin of approximately $3.3 million. The other thing I'd like to highlight again is the fund balance you'll see here is forecasted to remain above the required levels throughout the forecast, both with and without ARPA funds. So if you recall about a year ago, or a year and a half ago, when we did the budget, you know, while we were finding stability, but we really were heavily, heavily relied on the ARPA funds to help stabilize the forecast. So it's great to see that we're able to do that with and without the ARPA monies. Talking a little bit about the economic outlook, you know, again, as I demonstrated earlier for fiscal year '23, we're seeing some of this '22 trends to continue into fiscal year '23. We're expecting a positive operating margin. Again, the excessive consumer spending is expected to carry over. However, there remain, you know, concerns, primarily it's the inflation, which is, again, attributable to the strong consumer demand. The Federal Reserve, as you may have heard in my prior pension reports as well, has recalibrated their monetary policy earlier this year by hiking interest rates to kind of slow the inflation down, and which has also triggered a little bit of volatility and declines in the broader market. As I mentioned earlier, again, a great example is the Calpers investment performance. We're seeing, you know, direct, while direct, but also indirect, but a direct impact to the city's finances, because those are impacting our future pension costs. Overall, we do expect the recessionary impacts from this shift in the market. And the severity of the impact will be dependent on the duration of the higher inflation and the response from the Federal Reserve to control it. You know, if the Fed's action proved to be inadequate, we may expect a couple of years of weak growth to follow fiscal year '23. But overall, you know, we're keeping track. We're monitoring the economic conditions. And if additional changes are warranted as things progress into the next year, we'll certainly be before you with another update. Right? And key takeaways from this, again, our strong economic recovery was experienced during fiscal year '22. General fund ended better than projected due to higher tax revenue collections and the one-time ARPA monies. We're recommending that we kind of take the same approach as council has, taking those one-time dollars and investing in those one-time investments, or retaining those, you know, balances for future recessionary impacts. And as the city administrator mentioned, again, this is going to kind of set the tone for our upcoming annual budget development and where we'll be recommending to focus on one-time investments to utilize that fund balance. That, I have my recommendations before you. There are four. One is to receive the report, authorized, officially authorized a $250,000 contribution to the pension trust, adopt a resolution approving the updated position control list, as well as a resolution to authorize recommended mid-cycle adjustments that were presented tonight. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Harjo. Okay, I'll look to council, okay, Councilmember Hilton. And once we go through the council, I'll go to public comment if anybody's wondering when that will happen. Okay, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Harjo, the $100,000 is going to the community development for the housing element. Can you explain like why that is, why they need more money? Was that because it's been extended? They found that they have to do more work than normal? Like, what's the reason behind that?
As I understand, it's primarily professional services. It's a multi-year approach, so we have some dollars budgeted in the current fiscal year, but we anticipate that we're going to need additional dollars for professional services to support this effort.
Because it's moving into the next fiscal year and not finishing right now?
That's correct. We didn't budget for those dollars for fiscal year '23, but it's now crossing over fiscal years.
Okay. And the other question I had is on the position control. So I brought this up previously, I talked to Jimmy about it this morning. So we had a dispatcher's needs assessment back in 2016 that stated the minimum staffing should be three per shift, our public safety dispatchers. And then the fire department standards of coverage study showed that there's a need for a dedicated fire dispatcher, whether it's training our own or to have dual role or contract out with county. I asked this back in March and previously. Does staff still feel that we have an adequate public safety dispatchers to cover the increased calls of service and the needs for both police and fire? And we heard from the city minister's report that on one evening on Saturday night, there was like 200-plus calls of service, you know. And I can only imagine that when you stress the system, just with basic calls of service, even if you end up having something more than that, let's just say, a structured fire, a firefighter down, officer down, I'm just wondering if staff is still comfortable with just two dispatchers?
I defer to Mr. Forbes on additional, you know, information on that. But I think, you know, this exercise, again, was a mid-cycle adjustments. At this time, I'm sure the fire chief and police chief have had discussions around it. You know, if anything, that recommendation would have came before you if that was the recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Hilton, I think it would be helpful to have Chief Espinoza talk a little bit about the dispatch center, how they handle those nights of excessive calls. I will tell you that every department would like to have more employees, every department. So I'll have Pedro explain to you how they handle the workload with the current workforce.
Mayor, council, certainly it's a challenge when we get inundated with calls for service. However, we can't adequately perform a staffing study until we're fully staffed to try to determine whether or not, you know, we need to deploy a different model of scheduling. We're currently down three positions in the communications center. We just had our supervisor take a job up at the North Bay. And so we had to backfill her position by taking a dispatcher from there. So until we're fully staffed, we can really make a determination whether or not we need to redeploy or come up with an updated staffing study.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, seeing no other questions from the council at this time, I will ask if there's anyone from the public who wants to speak.
I have no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then coming back to the council. If there are no questions, then the first action is to receive the preliminary fiscal year-end report. Do I need a motion for that? No.
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we don't need a motion for that. So how about the motion to approve the transfer to the Section 115 pension trust? This represents the amount of money in interest that we've saved by paying it all in the beginning of the year, right? What's this, $250?
This is the general fund savings, up to 25% of...
Oh, even better.
Yeah, so in addition to that, that amount was $273,000, as mentioned in the...
So approve $250 to be transferred to the Section 115 trust. Is there a motion for that?
I made a motion, yeah.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we actually are doing digital voting here.
Okay, so that is six to one, right? Oh, it's me? I thought I hit it. Okay, seven, that's unanimous. Number three, is there a motion to adopt a resolution approving the updated position control list?
So moved.
Okay, now this one's a roll call. So moved by Councilmember Marks, seconded by Councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Amaderas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenckley?
Yes. Okay, and the last one is to adopt a resolution authorizing recommended mid-year budget adjustments.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Marks?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Amaderas, is that who that was?
Yes.
Okay, and roll call.
Councilmember Amaderas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenckley?
Yes, and that's unanimous. Okay, I'm ignoring that board because we're doing roll call. Okay, 12.2, consideration of adding Cesar Chavez Day, March 31st, as the City of Gilroy observed holiday. And Leanne will be giving us this staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the community. During the recent labor negotiations process, the topic of adding some additional holidays was raised by two of our labor groups. The groups requested consideration of adding Cesar Chavez Day and Juneteenth as additional observed holidays. Most employees in these labor groups would have a paid day off if these additional holidays are added to the list of the city's observed holidays. At the council meeting of August 15th, the council unanimously approved a council-initiated item to conduct further council discussion on the topic of adding the Cesar Chavez Day as an additional observed City of Gilroy holiday. So that is why this item is back to you now. Cesar Chavez Day is a federal commemorative holiday and also an observed holiday for the state of California since the year 2000. And it is a holiday to celebrate the legacy of the American labor rights hero, Cesar Chavez. And so Cesar Chavez Day is observed on March 31st of each year. And this is a day that community leaders come together to celebrate the life of Cesar Chavez and take inspiration in his decades of service to the workers of the United States. That's kind of his legacy that he left behind. So staff gathered information from our comparison agencies regarding observed holidays for the council to review, and that's included in your staff report. In the report, you can see that four of the 12 comparison agencies do observe Cesar Chavez Day. The others do not. There is a combination of both observed holidays and floating holidays. So when it comes to a floating holiday, an employee who wishes to personally observe Cesar Chavez Day would be able to use a floating holiday in lieu of actually an agency being closed on the particular day. The average number of holidays provided by the comparison agencies is 14, and it's a combination of observed holidays and floating holidays. And the average number of actual observed holidays is 12. And you can see from the data that Gilroy falls below both of those averages. An additional consideration regarding the addition of observed holidays is equity to our employees and our public safety organizations who cannot take holidays off. They work 24/7, and they do not get to observe holidays on the day that those holidays occur. So instead, they receive holiday pay. So those holiday pays are set by the MOU and are contained within the labor agreements for those employees. So while there is no obligation to do so, it would be equitable to proportionately increase the amount of holiday pay provided to employees who must work on these holidays. If additional observed holidays will be granted to non-safety employees, we should take this into consideration as well. In addition, you can see from the fiscal impact section of the staff report that the value of a holiday is less than a half a percent, or 0.00385, based on an employee who works 2,080 hours in a year. And so there's not any additional new hard cost, because the employee's salary, the employee's non-safety employee salary is the same. They're just getting a day off, and that's a day that services are not provided to the community. But there is a cost if we increase the holiday pay for our public safety employees who do have to work on holidays. So that is just something to consider, and that amount is estimated at about $130,000 if we add one holiday. Adding holidays is really at the council's discretion. It's a policy decision for you to make if you wish the city to be closed and fully observe any holiday that's determined. If you do decide to move forward with adding additional observed holidays, then staff will need to meet with the council in closed sessions to talk about the impact to our labor organizations and receive direction for those discussions. And then, following conclusion of those discussions and outcomes, staff would return to council with a resolution to potentially add additional observed holidays to the City of Gilroy's observed holiday list. So if the council does move forward with this this evening, for purposes of kind of an estimated timeline, we would meet with council at our next council meeting, October 3rd, in closed session. I would ask for about 30 days to meet with the labor groups, to communicate and talk with them. It could go faster, might not take the full 30 days, but I would ask for that. And then, potentially, November 7th, return to council. And then potentially November 7th, return to council for further discussion. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Leanne. Okay, Councilmember Armendaras?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Leanne, and your staff for your hard work on this. Well, a couple of questions and then also one correction. Cesar went by Cesar Estrada Chavez, not Eduardo, I think this is mom's maiden name.
My research was, led me in a wrong direction, sorry about that.
That's okay. How do we choose the benchmark cities that we compare to? I see that we're below average in both, observed and paid, but how do we choose those cities?
Yeah, the 12 agencies were done after completing a comparability study. We brought in an outside compensation specialist who did an analysis of Gilroy and other surrounding municipalities in our region, and determined other cities that had the most like comparisons to Gilroy, you know, population size, budget size, a variety of different demographic factors, and the ones that had the most common factors then ended up on our, our list of 12 comparable agencies.
Okay, but we didn't, just to clarify, we didn't do that study just for the purpose of this holiday thing?
Oh, no.
Already, yeah, that was a study.
It's been in place for many, for several years.
Exactly, when we do executive salary things, we're always, because I've asked that question several times, why, why these cities? And that's why.
Okay, and then, um... It's just a point of reference, it provides information.
Right.
No, no, I understand. The other thing is, so obviously if we consider Juneteenth as well, the $130,000 would be $260,000, right? It would just double because it's a static number?
Yeah, it's a proportionate, yeah.
Well, I think that, of course, the merits of, of Cesar's legacy and the impact on working families of this community, surrounding communities, and across the country, it goes without saying. So this is something I'll be supporting, so thank you.
All right, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Leanne and staff, for, shortly after I brought this up at our August meeting, I did a lot of research, and I actually talked to many of these cities, so I want to commend you on the research you did, because it answered all my questions. But I, I guess for me, and again, as Councilmember Armendaras just said, I mean, it's a significant date to, to, to many and to all. You talked about talking with labor, and maybe you could walk me a little through that. In here it says to work with them to get direction, I'm trying to understand what...
Council provides us direction in closed session. We go communicate with, with our labor organizations to determine if there's any impacts that they wish to discuss if we were to move forward with this. We listen, and then we try to resolve, and if we can reach an agreement, we come back, we meet with council. If we feel a need to meet with you again in closed session, we will, otherwise, we would put it on an open session for council approval.
Okay, and, yeah, I completely understand. Depending on the direction of the council, I would ask that we try to bring this back on October 13th instead of November 7th, that's more than 30 days.
October 13th?
That's, um...
I don't think we have a council meeting that day.
Or the, the 17th, excuse me. If we can bring it back on October 17th.
It'd be, that would be 30 days from today, however, that doesn't take into consideration meeting with you in closed session on October 3rd to get direction.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to...
It's mainly if, I, I think the main issue is with respect to our public safety organizations and what we're going to communicate with them as to...
Right, and I'm not trying to rush, I'm not trying to rush you, or obviously not, neither, I'm not trying not to get their input, but I, I don't understand why that can't happen sooner than later.
It may, like I said, it may.
All right, I respectfully ask...
It depends on what issues come up and what discussion is had.
Depending on where we go, I ask that we try to move it up sooner than later, so...
Sometimes availability, too.
Yeah, no, I agree. So no, I want to, I just wanted to commend you on, on getting this research, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Okay, I have some comments, and before we go to public comment, and that's, in comparing a day, a day, how do I want to say this, in comparing a holiday, which means closing City Hall, to a floating holiday, which means City Hall is open and only some people decide, or whoever decides to take the day off, the, correct me if I'm wrong, the different, there's no cost difference there, because the cost, other than the opportunity cost, is what we have to pay our public safety people, right? Which is the $130,000.
Correct.
So if the goal is to recognize Cesar Chavez Day as a holiday, then you would want to actually close, make it a holiday and close City Hall, which everyone should recognize that an additional holiday means another day that the city is not open and not providing services, right, to our, to our residents or to the community.
And you noted in the, as, in the staff report, the state of California observes it as a holiday where state services are closed and the employees have the day off. The federal government has it designated as a commemorative holiday, so it's not necessarily a day off, but it's a day recognized.
Right, right.
So...
Sure, no, if you've got something else, I just want to get to the public.
I'm not sure where this discussion is going, I, I understand.
No, no, I was just asking the difference between a floating holiday and a holiday.
Okay.
And the answer is financially speaking, there is no difference.
No difference.
Okay, I want to make sure, okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I have received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Well, okay, so then, as Leanne said, the, the, the chart, so to speak, that we have in our staff report is just comparing us to cities that are considered comparable to us in, in various data points that are, are looked at to consider as comparable. It's not cities in Santa Clara County, it's not that kind of thing. So, you want to start giving direction, council members?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think this is actual vo, I think it's a thumbs up, or, I would, I would recommend that we move forward, obviously take the next steps, and in regards to acknowledging and recognizing it as a city holiday where our employees would have the day off, obviously, and we would, we would celebrate that day, and I would finally ask that, again, if, if all possible, if it can't be in October, if it's November, that we, just if you let me know ahead of time.
Okay, so the, it's not, not a motion, but do we have consensus that the direction is for staff to proceed with an additional holiday?
Yep, yep.
Okay, that appears to be unanimous, so, sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
More work, I know. Okay, wow, item 13, we're on, right? City administrative reports. 3.1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have several items here to, to share with the council. One is a project update that has been ongoing for quite some time, and that is the upgrading of the City Hall HVAC. One time, it was estimated that it might cost a million dollars, and then over time, more time, we received 3 million budgeted from the council. In looking with our engineering plans and working with technical staff, they identified a project cost of about $6.5 million. So that is more than double what we were allocated, and it is a number that, at this time, I could not recommend that we do, considering the building, its age, it would be, you know, not a wise investment to spend 6.5 million dollars on a, on a building that probably isn't worth near that. So that being said, we as staff will go ahead and put the bids, the bids out to see if it verifies what our engineers and technical staff have advised, but I, I think most believe that we'll be coming back with you with a request to reject bids, and then we'll talk to you about how we're going to handle this issue. We're still using duct tape and staples and glue, but it sure beats $6.5 million on the HVAC system. So I just wanted to give you an update, there have been things going on, but that's where we're at right now.
Would you like council member questions as you go?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
What about just replacing, leaving all the ductives in the building now, just put a HVAC unit, it'll get us by until we decide for them to be compacted?
I, I think the problem is, is there's not one HVAC system here, there are numerous ones. So it was built over time, hodgepodge, and so there's really no point, place where you can just say, let's pull this piece out, put a new piece in, and everything's going to work great. You've got to do that several times, so the cost just keeps getting higher and higher, even just doing that.
Hang on, council member?
Leanne loves HVAC, so...
Just, just a point of clarification, so we're, we, we are looking at all options, and there may be, you know, a short-term fix of just replacing some of the condensers, and possibly, and, you know, again, it's another Band-Aid, but it just keeps the system we have going until we can figure out a long-term solution. So we are looking at a staff level at all different options in some of the zones in this building that seem to keep failing. So we, our facilities team, working with our HVAC contractor, are really exploring, you know, any and all options now that we got this very outrageous price tag for the system.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Thank you. Leanne, was there any, or are there any ARPA funds or things related to HVAC that we could apply to, grants, or anything that we could draw down because of the, you know, the COVID-related health issues or environmental issues related to an HVAC system?
I, I'm not aware of, of that, and I'm not sure that, that we, that staff would recommend spending 6.5 million of, of ARPA funds on, on an HVAC system in a very aged building. It would be a better investment to put those funds in a future facilities fund for, for a replacement of a city facility such as a new city hall that already comes with a brand-new, modern, energy-efficient HVAC system. That's the better long-term decision.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Next, just a quick update on the street maintenance program. If you've driven around Gilroy, or perhaps through the post office alley, you've noticed that our fiscal year 22 pavement management program has now updated and repaired 149 street segments, and have rehab, and have 67 new concrete curb ramps, 135 streets have been crack sealed, and nine street, street segments have been treated with asphalt overlay, a total of 1.4 miles of roadway. This week, the contractor is starting the excavation of some of our failed streets, those that haven't been repaired years because they're just so far gone, and they'll be rebuilding the sublayers to, to get ready to put new layer of asphalt, so it'll be smooth. This work is expected to continue into the next few weeks, and the project is expected to extend into November with new striping to finish. This is by no means the end of our street maintenance program, just due to weather and, and the time of the year, it slows down, but it will be ramping back up again in the spring, and as part of the next budget cycle, we will continue to work with you to identify funds to create, to keep investing in our, our streets, but we're, we're seeing progress. So, happy to answer any questions.
I'll just add, because this was the subject of the last copy with the mayor, and one of the residents was asking about a section of street that isn't within the city limits, the Mastin Onramp to 101, if anybody takes that, you know how bumpy that is, and that's the county. So yeah, we've got a ticket in Decaltrans to try to help push that along. So we're on a roll with, with street improvements, I want the community to know, all right.
The next item is a loose tie into streets. If you be aware, 10th and Chestnut, also known as Laurel Square, began demolition just last week. We waited a long, long time, but was very happy to see the bulldozers there, and so that seven-acre parcel will include Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, a Hyatt hotel, car wash, gas station, and more, and no, the city does not determine what type of coffee, coffee shop goes in there, so, sorry. But we do get those questions, and we certainly understand there's strong opinions on that. But really, the takeaway is, if you've driven on that intersection with Auto Mall, 10th Street and Chestnut, it's a disaster. We've held off doing any repairs there because it is going to get redone as part of this project. So again, more improvements, better-looking exit off of 10th Street, and so great to see a project going forward. Next, I've got three more. One of the more under, undernoticed technical improvements that we've made in the city is the police records management system. You know, we've done the ERP, we've done human capital management, land management systems, but the police department did a major overhaul of their technology to come into compliance with federal and state guidelines for reporting, and I'm really proud of Chief Espinoza and his team for getting this thing to go live on August 1st, and it makes it a lot easier for us to do things and share information with our neighbors and with other entities, including prime reporting, and, and really, the big benefit, too, is that a public portal will be made available on the department website with the next couple of months, it gives the public greater access to police information, and, and so really, a project that took a, took a lot of work and was really overdue for us, but I'm, I'm glad to see that we are now on our way. Okay, I believe back in March, the council directed staff to, as a council-initiated item, to work on the justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion program, and so just this last Friday, the city sent out a RFP, request for proposals, for a consultant to help the city and what we call the Jedi Committee, which is comprised of city employees who volunteer to be part of this project. And so that will allow us to develop policies, procedures, best practices, and a framework to really start the city's first program like this. It's long overdue, and there's a lot of excitement about doing this, and so our, the responses to the RFP are due on October 14th, and regardless of what the price is, we will bring that back to council for approval, seeing how it is such a significant, you know, program that we're doing, which will also impact council, because council will be involved in the, some of the practices and, and best practices that we, we develop. So that is also on its way. And lastly, I just want to thank the Recreation Division and the 75 volunteers who showed up on Saturday on Uggis Creek, they removed 365 pounds of trash, 116 pounds of recyclable material from the creek, and they found car tires, mattresses, chairs, metal poles, a few suitcases, a bike tire, and hundreds of bottle caps. But altogether, the county, over 1,000 people volunteered and removed 25,000 pounds of garbage on Saturday alone. So thank you so much for coming out, and thank you for Adam Henig and his team for organizing a great event. That concludes my report.
Great, wow. All right, item 14, city attorneys' reports.
Yes, I'd like to report on the rebuilding of the city's association, which Councilmember LaRoma Munoz mentioned. The city's association is an un, is an ill-defined group that may be an unincorporated association, it's not quite clear legally what it is, and that's been called into question because of some employment claims that were made against it that put this all in focus. So the association itself volunteered, or voted, not volunteered, voted to form, reform itself into a joint powers authority. That vote is meaningless because a joint powers authority, which is like SCRAW, is actually an agreement between cities or among cities, and so the actual people who have to decide whether there should be a JPA formed or not are the cities, like Gilroy, and so it's, it's a decision for this council as well as the other councils of the other 14 cities in the county. Nonetheless, the Authority Council, the City's Association Council, Gary Baum, has been working on a joint powers authority agreement, and our city attorneys' group, which we have of the city attorneys in the county, have been working with him to try to put it into some kind of reasonable legal form. That form has now been reasonably achieved. I have forwarded it to the city administrator for review by the city manager groups. That does not represent a recommendation from the city attorneys that this, any city should do this, because when this comes to the council, the council will have to decide whether we as a city think it's a good idea even, even to form a new public agency, which will then have powers and a budget and employees and so on, and if so, whether or not Gilroy wants to join it. Gilroy will not have to join it, it's not mandatory, and the city's association historically has been of more interest to the North County cities, particularly those concerned with airport noise, because they've had a, a working group on that subject. So in any event, there's now at least a propos, not a propose is the wrong word, but a possible agreement, that's probably in good legal form, and in the next few months, should be considered by the council to make some sort of a decision about what, what, what you think is appropriate. That concludes my report.
Okay, are there any questions from council?
I do, good question. Andy, a joint powers authority usually has a defined set of power over a specific subject or area, right? What, what are they seeking power over?
That's a good question, and when the agreement comes to you, you should look at it closely, because the city's association has historically represented the cities in certain limited ways, including, but mostly it's been...
As a private entity?
It's, as some kind of entity, but not, yes, but not, not as a, as a defined public entity, that is correct. The current JPA gives it a lot of powers, just like SCRAW has many kinds of powers, and so under the actual JPA is written, the new entity could borrow money, could enter into contracts, could buy land, could sue and be sued, and so on. That might or might not be a good idea, and I think that's one of the things you'll have to consider, to what extent, if it's created, its power should be limited.
Thank you.
All right.
Wow, I was expecting a much longer meeting. It is 7:28, and we are, you want to, Andy, give this deal?
Sure, in closed session, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957, and Gilroy City Code, Section 17A112. and Gilroy City Code Section 17A112. Employee name, Andy Faber, city attorney. So the appropriate thing to do now is take public comment, if any, and then go into closed session where we will have to vote to stay in closed session, and that vote is a reportable action.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seeing no public comments, then does anybody need a break? Or can we just continue? I'd like to continue.
Madam Mayor, I suggest a five-minute break to ensure everything is turned off and attached.
Okay, all right, then we will take a five-minute break. Thank you.